Called meeting to order, please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Garza, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Chairman Di Maria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht.
Here.
Ms. Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. O'Hanlon.
Here.
Ms. Seaberg.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Alonso. Ms. Maddick.
Thank you. Mr. O'Hanlon, Ms. Williams, you did a very good job chiming up there on TV for your first roll call. Congratulations on being here. We appreciate your putting yourself out there for us. Dr. McGorick, are there additions or deletions to the agenda?
We do. There's a personnel addendum added to the consent agenda and for the discussion agenda. Under financing operations, there's an update on Baldwin Elementary and intermediate schools.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements and spotlights?
Yes, we do. We have one.
Thank you, Dr. McGorick. I'm very happy to be able to stand before you, Chairman Di Maria, other members of the board. Good evening to everyone that's here tonight. I'm very pleased to be able to present some fabulous students from Osborn High School tonight for our spotlights and recognitions. The Center for the Arts, which is located in Old Town Manassas, sponsors Off the Wall, which is a yearly jury youth art exhibit that features work submitted by area high school students. When a student's artwork is selected to be displayed in the exhibit, of course, it's a very tremendous honor. This is the 13th year the center has run the program, which is judged in the following areas: visual art, visual art with technology, poetry, and wearable art. Four Osborne High School students had their work accepted into the show, which is exciting. In years past, we've had one to two students that have been accepted, so we were very excited about that. So the four students, I believe a few of them are here tonight, and I'm going to call them forward. And their artwork is on display, so we were able to secure pictures of the pictures to share with you, so Ms. Garza will assist us with that. Ann Bray.
She is?
Okay. Well, Ann, she received first place from the entire gallery showing for her drawing. Her artwork is mixed media, red writing hood. And I did want to share a quote from the gallery director regarding her win and her artwork. She said that the judges were very impressed with how unique your piece was and the skill that went into it, so we're very proud of Ann for that. Next, we have Luke Pham.
I think for the auditorium, for everyone in the auditorium to know that this is a piece of cardboard.
Yes.
That's just been carved.
That is correct. Yes. Very, very detailed work. Our next person is Luke Pham for Fifty One Shades of Gray, a charcoal piece. And Luke received third place for his entry, so we're very proud of him.
Looks like a photo.
Mm-hmm. And next, we have Jessica Lu. Okay, all right. She had a pencil drawing, and you can see that here. A self-portrait? Okay, sorry, a self-portrait. And then Maria Torres Seraphin. Okay. All right. She had a mixed media piece, Narcissus. And I believe Leon Song, who you hear? Okay. The wearable art piece, come on up. I don't think... He is a designer. Yes. I didn't have a picture of your artwork.
But it's in the newspaper.
Yes, that is true. He was featured in the newspaper. That is right. But, you know, this really doesn't do it justice to have the artwork on the screen here. You really should go by the gallery and check this out, because they will all be on display through January 20th at the Center for the Arts. The center held an open house this past Saturday where the students were recognized and they were allowed to share their artwork with their family and friends. Additionally, after the artwork hangs at the Center for the Arts, it travels to Lockheed Martin's Manassas campus to hang in their lobby and be on display for a whole month. So we're very proud of this wonderful community collaboration, which showcases the tremendous amount of talent in the area of fine arts at Osborne High School. And I do believe art teacher and fine arts department chair Sarah Weaver is here, so we're going to ask her to come up and join her students. Because we know that our students have a lot of talent, but also we are so appreciative of our staff members that take time to work with them and guide them towards these experiences that they get to have. So we're very excited about that and appreciative of all the work you all do. So let's get together right here and take a nice photo.
I think Avery was also very nervous, because they had a lot of people approaching them wanting to buy this gear.
Right.
So we have very, very talented students.
How much fun it is to dig before they want to.
He said, "Let's talk."
The community does need to visit us. It's unbelievable the talent that we've got at Oxford High School.
That's right.
Leon's dress was made on paper, and it was a long dress with a train with ruffles.
Nice.
It's a second year in a row.
Yes, second year in a row, yes. Congratulations. Thank you.
Let it be known, I made a capitalist out of Chairman. I rubbed off on you. I made you a capitalist.
Yeah.
An unabashed capitalist.
Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Academics, Mr. Williams.
No report.
Thank you. Education support, Mr. Albrecht.
Just two things. As Superintendent said, we will have an update later on Baldwin. The other item, it will be on the next board meeting. We are not going to have a committee report. If you recall, we had discussion about the Gillum Field relocation. We did put that out for rebid. The bids have been received. Next board meeting, the revised bids will be presented by staff.
Thank you, sir. And we'll move into one of our new ones. Ms. Kiefer, policy?
No report.
Thank you. And Mr. Albrecht, finance, sir.
Just a reminder, the budget work session scheduled starting. We have meetings on Tuesday, starting the 17th of January, and also the 14th and 21st of February, near-term schedule for people to think about.
All right, thank you, sir.
Should we be on Valentine's Day?
Yeah, it's going to be... Well, you know, in Sue's crush, because we usually use them very, very romantically. You know, our 33rd one together, it's usually crazy. Don't do that to me. Personnel. Chairperson Seaberg, personnel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, she's over here. Where you at?
The personnel committee met twice today. The first meeting was for the purpose of training new board members. And our second meeting, we reviewed the results of the employee engagement survey, which will move forward and be presented to the whole board on the Tuesday, January 24th meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Well done. Board member comments. Mr. O'Hanlon, we'll start with you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to take a minute and thank a few people. I want to say thank you. First of all, I'm humbled to be here today. This is really a unique opportunity for me. First, I want to thank my wife, who has supported me through the journey to the school board, including the election and then the subsequent appointment. Next, I would like to thank my friends and the community members who cheered me on the whole way. I would also like to thank the voters who submorted me in November, and especially like to thank the voters who moved Pam Sebesky up to the city council, which opened the seat for me tonight. And finally, I have a tremendous amount of gratitude to the board for selecting me to join them here today. So thank you all, and I hope I serve you well.
I'm sure you will. Thank you, sir. Ms. Williams?
Well, I am extremely humbled to be up here. I cannot thank my family, my friends, the support I got for this election. I've been in the city for about 15 years, and this was the first year we saw our local elections at the same time as what... Such an important presidential election. So it was an extreme learning experience, and I'm just excited that so many voters of the city of Manassas had confidence in me to elect me. I want to share a quote with everybody, so you've got an idea why I went through this process, because not only is it time-consuming, it's time away from your family, and it's very expensive. The first idea is that we teach students how to learn, so they're able to face a changing world with confidence. The second idea is we teach in a diverse world, and must fit our instruction to be valued and used within this environment. Finally, the student is always the center of the process. One must build a discovery method that provides each student with the tools to build their success. I've had this little quote, I'm not sure who said it, the author's unknown, but I've had this on my bulletin board probably since my kids were born, and I pulled it off today just to express my thoughts and my inner feelings to everybody this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Seaberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome to our new school board members. It's kind of strange, I feel like I've already been working with you, but we just got sworn in again the other night, so. I wanted to remind everybody that Monday, January 16th, is Martin Luther King Day, also known as the Day of Service. So if you don't have something in particular you're supporting that day, you might want to go to the Hilton Memorial Chapel for the Martin Luther King Oratorical Contest. It starts at 11:00 a.m. down at Woodbridge. I also wanted to invite everyone to a second in a series of community workshops. Monday, January 23rd is Human Trafficking. It will be hosted at Metz Middle School from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And the reason why I knew about it is because my husband went to the PTA meeting last night, and he brought home the flyer. So go to your PTA meeting, share the information, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kiefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to be briefed tonight, but I wanted to wish everyone a Happy New Year. It's good to be back. It's especially good to be back with new colleagues, who've been colleagues all along anyways, but it's going to be nice to work with both of you in this capacity as well, so welcome. I also wanted to congratulate the city council members who were sworn in last night. Was it last night?
Last night. Yeah.
As well, for stepping into their service for upcoming years as well. In addition, of course, I want to congratulate our kids tonight, who were recognized for their great work. We can only aspire to be half of the artistic minds that they are. And lastly, we lost a great leader in our community. Senator Colgan is one that I think we all up here and throughout the community look to be more like, so we express our condolences to his family, but he really was a man who worked extremely hard his entire life, and so we just wanted to send our thoughts out to his family. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. Happy New Year. I'd like to congratulate its academic team, who did a fine job. They were on television Saturday with some folks here. I've seen the audience who were there as well, so your smiling faces there, supporting them. So congratulations to them. It can be very nerve-wracking being on television. They all did a great job representing Osborne themselves and the school and their families, so thank you to them, and good job, Ms. Di Maria, posing, you know, in the back of them.
I think I did my best.
Congratulations to the artists tonight, who are honored, and the displays they had, they're really phenomenal. I know we frequently talk about some of the great things our kids do, and some folks may get tired of it, may not appreciate it, but it really is truly outstanding and laudable. So congratulations to them and to their teachers. Some of the work you saw is really, really great. And finally, congratulations are in order for some folks and condolences for some others. There was a great football game on last night that kept me up till past 1:00 in the morning. And some folks are happy, some aren't, but it was a great game nonetheless. So congratulations to the smiling person there in the second row especially. Thank you for your time, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think, you know, obviously sincere congratulations to our students, its academics, the artists that presented earlier this evening. And Mrs. Kiefer and I were looking at the one, and we were convinced the charcoal was a picture, a black and white picture, because just the reflection shown in the glass, it's amazing that children can have that kind of talent, or anybody can have that kind of talent. It's a tribute to our staff, who really bring out the best in the kids, and a tribute to the many fine things we can do as a city school system. I'd just like to echo also Mrs. Kiefer's comments. Senator Colgan was laid to rest today. He was an outstanding gentleman, and while not a resident of the city, he was one of ours. And I think the level of service he provided for so many years, going back to when he was on the Prince William County Board of Supervisors, is something that all of us should try to emulate, and I encourage every one in the community to get involved, like Senator Colgan and many of that greatest generation did. We've lost many of them, and it's time for some new people to step up.
Thank you, sir. You're absolutely right. It was a life well lived. If we can somehow come close to what he did, we will do pretty well. This morning, I got a call about Baldwin, and we're going to get an update from Mr. Hawkins. I'll let him give you all the good news. But we had a leak, and it was a pretty substantial leak. And I got there a few minutes before 3:00 this morning, and one of our police officers, who happened to have my number, texted me so that I could get over there quickly. The... They were our first responders. They saw what was going on. They called the fire department. They called everybody on the list, or the first person they're supposed to on our phone tree, or whatever it is. Our police department does a pretty good job. I am completely impressed with them. Not only did they stay there until we had enough help to get things rolling, they were moving desks, moving computers, doing their very best to help us in every way. They just didn't say, "Okay, you're in your building." Out the door, they go. And the police officer that stayed the longest, I'm going to say it was Marcus Hyde, and he's a 2007 graduate of Osborne High School, and it just shows the kind of kids that we are producing and continue to produce. So I need to thank them very much. And then our staff started showing up, and they just started showing up, and they started showing up, and they're rolling in, and they're not looking around, wondering what's going on. They're grabbing squeegees, they're grabbing brooms, they're grabbing machines to suck up water. And it was 3:15, 3:30 in the morning, and you would think it was 8:00, and they got to work. And not all of them live five minutes away from the school, and they all got there, and they got there in a hurry, because it was what was needed to be done. And our maintenance staff and our custodial staff work so, so hard. They are so diligent, and they are so... They want to do a good job for our kids and for our city and for our schools. So when you see our custodians, make sure you shake their hand. It might not have been them there, and I'm not talking Baldwin custodians. They called them all, and they're all rolling in. And then they had to go to their regular job. It's not like they said, "Okay, we've done this, now I'm going to go home and catch a few winks." No, they went to their regular school and took care of their regular school and their regular kids. So make sure you give those guys the credits. They deserve those men and women that are custodial staff and our maintenance staff. They do a fabulous job, and I'm very, very proud of them. And I'll let you handle it from there, sir. Okay, we will move on to citizens' comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the city of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be very respectful when presenting your comments. Vito Elagua. Is that close?
Close enough.
It's close enough, yeah, because that's all you need to get.
Yes, Vito Elagua. Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me start off by adding my congratulations and best wishes to our newest board members. One of the things that I didn't get around to bringing up last time we spoke was an outreach suggestion that, for your consideration, and it's possible you're already doing this in some form or another, so feel free to stop me and save everyone's time. But when I was looking for a house in the area and considering Manassas and comparing different schools and their qualities and so on, I came to the process, like many other people, armed with only a rating from a particular website that most of you are familiar with. And like most other first-time buyers, I also really relied on the real estate professional that was working with us. I have to say that he was less than helpful. And I don't mean this to blame him, it's really not his job necessarily, but to point to the fact that there is perhaps a lack of information in... With this particular group of people that, in one way or the other, end up being part of the introduction to our school system for new residents. And in our case, everything turned out fine. In one of the houses we visited, we started chatting with a neighbor who happened to be a local teacher and also happened to be in their front yard. But this is a serendipitous event that you cannot rely on. So what I'm suggesting is an initiative to introduce the local real estate professionals to our school division, something along the lines of what you do with Saturdays with a superintendent, perhaps, or sort of an open house for our division. And so the idea is to get these professionals better acquainted with our schools, what differences really exist and what don't, and questions that their clients might have, and how to address them, and what resources to point them to. And when there's situations where, "Well, should I buy this house versus that, because it's zoned for this school versus the other," or "In Manassas versus Prince William County," and so on. This... Most of all, really, to understand that the question, how the question that really matters to new prospective residences, you know, it's along the lines of, "I wonder if my children are going to get a quality education here." How that question is different from really the aggregate proficiency level for a whole population locally in Manassas. And so I'm preaching to the choir, I'll stop there. I suggest that this is an approach with the complete transparency, not as a form of advertising, really offering resources for these professionals, and perhaps involving some of the community to bring up testimonials. So if it sounds like I'm creating more work here for perhaps Ms. Williams or Ms. Radford, it goes without saying that I'm, if at all helpful, I'm offering my help in this, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Vito. We appreciate that. I let you go a little bit long there, because I didn't get the clock started in time, so it was your lucky day. Thank you very much for your thoughts. I don't have anyone else signed up. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, thank you all very much. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I moved that the school board of the city of Manassas adopted the consent agenda as modified.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, seconded by Mrs. Kiefer, that the school board of the city of Manassas adopt the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 7-0. Moving on to the discussion agenda. Right?
Yes.
Yeah, we are doing that right. Update on Baldwin Elementary. I gave all the good news. You can continue from there, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Di Maria, school board members, and Dr. McGorick. Early this morning, we were notified that a water pipe had broken at Baldwin Elementary School, and water was flowing from the ceiling on the third-floor extended learning area down to the second and the first floors, which house kindergarten through third-grade classrooms. Our maintenance team and the custodial teams from both Osborne High School and Baldwin responded. We also contacted an outside vendor, A1 FloodTech, to assist us in the remediation effort. A review of our security camera footage documented that approximately 10:15 last evening, water started leaking from an outside air unit. The unit circulates fresh air throughout the building. An outside air damper was inadvertently locked into the open position, which caused a dehumification coil to freeze, and a pipe burst causing the release of water. A motion detector on the second floor sent an alarm at approximately 2:00 a.m. The Manassas City Police responded and made the appropriate notifications. There are no motion detectors on the third floor, since their primary function would be to detect an intruder, which would be detected on the first or the second floors. As a result of this occurrence, motion detectors are being considered to be installed on the third floor. While the cleanup effort was extensive, there was no permanent damage to the building. Currently, appropriate repairs have been made, and cleanup crews are at Baldwin. Fans and dehumidifiers will continue to run throughout the night and all day tomorrow. Air quality tests are being completed to ensure the safety of our students and staff. Students will not report to school tomorrow, and staff will report at their normal time. The cost of this restoration effort will be the responsibility of the building contractor, and we're keeping track of any and all overtime, equipment damage, ceiling tile costs, vendor costs, et cetera. These costs will either be paid directly by the building contractor, or the cost will be deducted from the building retainage. And I'd also like to join Mr. Di Maria in, you know, I'm continually amazed by the dedication of our staff, who without hesitation reported to the school, some as early as 2:00 in the morning, to address this situation. I want to take the time to thank them for their efforts, because without them, we wouldn't be where we are today. And I was by Baldwin Elementary just before the meeting tonight. The school looks in good shape. We have cleaning crews there right now, wiping everything down, and fans and dehumidifiers are running as we speak, and the teachers will come in tomorrow and put back everything in its proper place that was moved. So great job by the police department and our maintenance team and custodial teams. It's like Mr. Di Maria said, they were not standing around waiting for somebody to tell them what to do. They all reached and grabbed a mop bucket. And thank you, Mr. Di Maria. I mean, when I got there this morning, he had a broom pushing water out the... Around in the school. Not many school board chairman would be there at 3:00 in the morning, so thank you, sir. The damage started on the third floor, which there's no students are there at this time, and won't be any until next September. So at no time were any of our students in that area going to be affected by this occurrence. So I don't know, are there any questions, concerns, comments that you have at this time?
I'll have one. The... I was writing something down, so I might have missed it when you said it.
Okay.
But the... Not a dehumifier, the thing that leaked.
Yes.
They are necessary in the humid months, and we have more than one up there. And so they have been shut down, so that when we start school back up, we don't have the possibility of them, another one, having the same situation that this first one had. So we are taking precautions, and we will... We won't. They will be by the contractor. They will be inspected again to make sure everything is safe before we turn them back on, before we need them come March, April, or May. So not only is everything being cleaned up, we've taken precautions to make sure that it won't happen again, at least not this situation.
Not this situation, that's right.
Okay. Ms. Kiefer, did you have something? No? No?
I just kind of want to highlight, because Mr. Hawkins said it, and I want to make sure everybody understands it, this wasn't a design flaw, this is nothing other than an occupational oops. This is no different than someone leaving the window open in the bathroom, because the kids are in there steaming it up, and they open the bathroom, and the window's open all weekend, and look what happens. The louver, the damper, the, whatever the proper technical term for the air handling system that brings fresh air in, was accidentally left open, and we're in record cold. I would just, you know, and that was part, the construction company, to their credit, has accepted full responsibility, their guys were up there doing whatever, did it for whatever safety reasons they had to do that. It just happens.
Anyone else? Thank you very much for talking, I appreciate you being there very early as well. And, you know, I showed my boots and jeans, and so did everybody else, and here comes Andy rolling in there looking like that, making everybody else look bad. So he had a long way to come, and he got there quickly and got dressed up. That's what he sleeps in. I am, I am complete with the agenda. Somebody can?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Kiefer, second by Mr. Williams, to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry seven, zero. My man speaks.